Okay. It's eleven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Mr. Clement, the lead is tonight's.
Dear God, we ask for your presence and guidance throughout our meeting tonight. As we work together for the betterment of our community, we ask that we leave this name. Amen. And also, if we can do a moment of silence for remembrance of the nine eleven.
Thank you. If you would, could you please call?
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Here.
There.
Sonny?
Motion to excuse Mr. Taylor for the next move. So moved. So.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tom?
Yeah. Okay, um, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any council discussion on said minutes?
Yes, um, as the president, the special session on the twenty-third, we went into executive session, and during that, Mr. Sherman walked out of the executive session. So I think that should be added to that.
You would have had that, you know, the being included in the structure.
Order, order.
Order.
Shit is. Order. Order. Enough. Stop. Okay, um. So we have a motion to approve of that. So moved.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sonny? Yes. Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Charlie?
Yes. All right, citizens' comments?
I've got one. If I don't have, so I always have one, but I think it was just an amazing service that was given at the square today in honor of nine eleven, because we will never forget. And we thank everybody that got to participate and just make us remember who we are as a country.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay, business and organizational comments with Mr. Holmes tonight. You want to speak?
Um, yes. What did you do over here? Go.
Just anywhere.
I turned out to pull it out. My name is Fred Holmes. I'm here tonight with Katie Oer, who is our executive director of the top east Ohio American Red Cross. And we'd like, or I would like to propose to you a proposition on volunteerism for your city employees. I started volunteering with the Red Cross back in two thousand and five for Hurricane Katrina. And after I left the employment of City Nelsonville, I worked for a company called Volunteer Energy. Volunteer Energy allowed me to go on deployments while they're employed without taking any vacation. And so we've been trying to present this to different companies and corporations and municipalities. And one of the questions that you're probably coming or probably should be asking is what would the city get out of it? Number one, you're going to get a better floor. You cannot go on deployment and help people and feed people and shelter people without coming back differently. Number two, they get training and problem solvers. The number one training they give, when they get their assignment to report to the Air Force, why they're in Tallahassee, they have to get off the plane, follow the instructions, and get to it. If they pass that test, then we'll go on detection of two. Number three, they learn how to work as a team. We always work as a team. We don't go down there and say, oh, I don't like so-and-so. I don't want to work with it. No. It's your team. And so they're usually two-week deployments, and I can tell you, I was reading an article today, twenty twenty-three, we have surpassed the most billion-dollar disaster ever. And here's the bad news. We have three and a half months to go. Hawaii is not a short term. Sometimes we measure deployments and helping in weeks. That's going to be measured in months. We'll be sheltering people probably for at least nine months. If we're sheltering people, we're feeding people. We have people in Tallahassee right now, Hurricane Lee. They're all up in the air. We've got people on standby. We have people, um, we'll know more later this week than where it gets if it isn't. But the need is definitely out there. And I can tell you that on my thirty-four different deployments, every time I go out, I come back. I think I've ordered a copy, but it's not, uh, councilman, I have a copy of this, and I would be happy. I'll also leave you some cards. If any of your employees are interested, they may have been interested, but if any of them are interested, please head and call me, and I'd be happy to talk to them. I'll know what it's about. And this is just a skeleton of it. It can be changed, modified, however you want. But thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Sir. All right. Very much. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Yeah. And we have committee discussions.
I'm sorry, good. I'll start on behalf of Jason Coe. He wasn't able to be here tonight, so. He tried to skip past everything.
I did.
We had a Parks and Rec committee meeting. We have a plan, a gentleman in the community, his name's Jacob Blake. He has a company called Ryder Construction. He's received some money to rebuild the dugouts down in Polley Field, or not Polley Field, the baseball fields. And he is getting that plan together with exactly what they're going to do and get it to me. And he gets all the council. What's the other? Neil Summers with the Brick? Neil Summers with the Brick Plant, uh, the Brick Plant Park. I think that'll be a great thing. He is going forward, looking for money to fund that also. So that's, uh, the city owns a lot right behind the Brick Plant, or off to the side right there, so they're looking to design like a kind of a major trail up through there.
Oh, they were just looking for.
Okay.
ROK, yes, to go forward. They should find it.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so the police and fire committee met twice to discuss police dispatching. We heard a proposal from Athens County nine-one-one and also Hocking College, and I think we're going to try to do a follow-up meeting on the twenty-eighth of this month. And then also the finance committee met, and we have legislation tonight. And we also discussed the budget for twenty-four. Hopefully, the first draft will be out on this Friday on the fifteenth. We'll try to have a finance meeting on the twentieth to discuss that. With the final, or a follow-up meeting on the twenty-eighth, and if all goes well, the first reading of the budget will be the first meeting in October. So hopefully, we can have the budget done and in place sooner than usual.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, all the meetings will be on the twenty-eighth, correct? So it's that Thursday?
Yeah.
That's it.
So all committee meetings will be on the twenty-eighth.
Uh, Mr. President, the Judiciary Committee met. We discussed tweaking and refining the ethics, code of conduct, and transparency policies for the city. There's an ordinance on the agenda tonight for us to look at and vote on. We also discussed a potential policy for recovering and collecting restitution that's due to the city. We don't have an actual policy in place yet, so I'm getting together with the auditor's office to figure out what the best approach to that would be. So I'll have to follow up on the twenty-eighth to address that as well.
Then, uh, Mr. President, the fighting and development committee met. Neil Summers came in, made a presentation on the feral cat issue we have in town as well. He's working with the folks with the Humane Society to help start a neuter and release program to help kind of forestall the propagation of cats, or feral cats anyway. So we're working on that. Dora is ready for, our next executive comes on board to make the application to the state, get that ball rolling. And then we've also started work on a rental code as well. Similar. Yeah. Correct.
And to reiterate, that will be rental code.
Correct.
Everyone's house code.
Correct.
Okay.
Big letters.
Okay. Just making sure.
Have we heard anything further from our U.S. police?
We were discussing that in the executive tonight about the, uh,
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So Mr. Duffy, I had emailed you last couple of weeks ago about, well, was my assignment in any committee meetings, any committees?
We'll have a discussion. So.
I don't want to answer that. Let me just check.
So. All right, anyone else? Okay. All right, department updates. So you got Jason's?
Yeah. So this is for the street department. An update on some paving that's going to go on. So Monroe Street between Fayette and Columbus Street is done. Intersection of Monroe and Fayette is also done. Faru Street between the Train Trax and Meyer Street has been paved. Sign from Chestnut to around Poplar has been paved, so the very end of Poplar where it connects on to Chestnut is paved. High Street between Buruk and Third Street. Third Street from Canal all the way to High Street, and then Second Street from Chestnut all the way to High Street. Those were some of the worst sections in town, so it's nice to get those done. For next year, we're working on putting together a list of anything we want to get done to put out for a bid. I hope we're trying to save some money and get stuff bundled in together for a bigger project as opposed to doing a bunch of small projects. Since the last meeting, the utility crew has replaced two fire hydrants, repaired eleven water leaks, been doing daily oops locates for the water project. We repaired a curb on Church Street that was causing some flooding for a resident. They're not working clearing brush and hanging tree limbs and some alleyways, changing out signs on newly paved streets. And we're also working on getting a lot of the storm drains, storm sewers cambered so that we can try and detect cross connections and I-N-I infiltration. That's going to hopefully help fix some issues where sewage is draining into the storm sewer. Also from the EPA Lex. Jason also wanted to point something out in regards to possibly hiring a seventh utilities person. So just wanted to make it clear that this is not a person who's going to be working in a water plant. So currently, there are only six utility employees that are responsible for all the mowing, doing all the street work, water distribution, sewer collections, maintaining the parks, school, city building, doing locates for water lines, sewer lines, that kind of thing, running the street sweeper. And then of those six, one of them is assigned all day, every day to manage the people from Star who do the miscellaneous cleaning and that kind of stuff. So really, there are only five employees that do all this every task for the city. That's why they're looking to add us up.
All right. Chief is tied, you're up.
Yes. All right, uh, we're still partnering with Red Cross for smoke alarm installs within the city. And our crew has to take, make an assessment of the home and install it. And fill out a perfect paperwork for Red Cross because we are reimbursed those detectors through Red Cross. So that you're there. Blinds that we're actually installing in the homes. Uh, grants are still in process. There's a firefighter environmental Owens exposure grant. And this is an additional grant to the ones that I wrote before. And they've allowed payment of up to fifteen thousand dollars towards bunker gear, so that helps out. So I submitted for that. Fire alarm subs, again, that's a, it's going to be a, that's a two boat rescue trailer that I applied for. We're still waiting on that grant award, uh, reading. Uh, safety intervention grant, this is for vehicle stabilization, stabilization struts and replacement battery-operated ventilation fans. Still waiting to hear back from them on that one. And we're working on quotes and demos right now for the stabilization struts. Uh, the new hires we put on here a while back, uh, still working on daily on-ship training to maintain the efficiency level that we expect here at the fire department. And they're all, we're working very well so far. We currently have one firefighter and fire safety inspector class and three firefighters and paramedic class. So I hope they'll, I'll get some help soon on some more fire safety inspections. And today, as everybody knows, the twenty-two-year anniversary from nine eleven. We had our services, which started eight forty-six this morning. Now, this year in attendance, we're the planes belonging to your fire department, Jacksonville voluntary fire department, the Tri-County National Vacation School Fire EMS student class, and also Police Department, the Hocking College Police Department. Uh, Dr. Young with additional administrative staff from Hocking College was present. Commissioner Charlie Atkins was present, representing Nelsonville Council, was Councilman Sherman, and local media, and members of the public force. This is pretty good turnout this year. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Chief Carter?
The smoke alarm program, how do people request?
So if they contact the fire department, we can get, and take a, make an assessment of the hundredth dollar, perfect paperwork. As long as we have the smoke detectors available for Red Cross, which I'm supposed to be getting another shipment.
Okay.
Uh, we can install those.
Very good. Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Moving on to second reading of ordinance forty-nine dash twenty-three.
And ordinance, it's set in term, the terms and conditions and the grant money for the Ohio EMA ARCA purchase bond retention incentive in the amount of thirty-seven thousand eighty-five dollars declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Nelsonville has awarded grant, have been awarded grant money in the amount of thirty-seven thousand eighty-five dollars from the Ohio EMA ARCA purchase bond retention incentive.
Nope. No, second reading. Any council discussion?
Just want to point out that that money goes directly to the police officers and firefighters of Nelsonville. Uh, the names are already there, and certain amounts are determined based on their uh, qualifications and what, you know, how long they were there for its retention grants.
It's based off the salary from the.
Yes.
Any more council discussion? Question to adopt? So moved.
Okay. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
Yes.
And Sonny? Yes. Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Moving on to screen. Ordinance fifty-dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? Okay.
An ordinance approving change order one for Nelsonville Water Systems Improvement Phase Two Project Contract Declaring an Emergency. Whereas the City of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two. Whereas a change to the general contract is recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas the purpose of this change order is to replace the old setters while the pits are open. Whereas this will be change order one for this project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by seventy-three thousand ninety-six dollars thirty cents and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Whereas the funds will be drawn from the contingency portion of this project in which there is enough to cover the increased price. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The State of Nelsonville hereby approves change order one for the Nelsonville Water System Improvements Phase Two Project Contract as described in exhibit one, attached here to and incorporated into this ordinance as if rewritten fully within. The contract price will be increased by a sum of seventy-three thousand ninety-six dollars thirty cents. The change is necessary to replace one hundred and seventy-six old setters while the pits are open. Acting City Manager Devon Pollard shall have the authority to enter into, accept and/or authorize the contract change order two for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Project Phase Two Project Contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of its league, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rule the eleventh day of September two thousand and forty-three.
Okay. Any council discussion on said?
What we have with our contingency money, is there like a good portion left?
There is. So for this, this is the new water project that's started. So this project, uh, or this change order seventy-three thousand, we have five forty-three. I hate to do a change where it's better when we start right off. Uh, but city requested it's an opportunity to go ahead and replace all those setters, so I'd recommend it. Any more council discussion? Okay. Motion to suspend. So moved. So.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sonny? Yes. Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. So moved.
Mr. Sonny? Yes. Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce, please? All right. Thank you.
An ordinance approving change order three for Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project, man declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas the purpose of this change order is adding a curb along North Alley and Railroad Street due to a lack of curb. Whereas the change order also includes compensation for assisting the city with locating the leak under Canal Street and repairing the structure so work can continue. Whereas the change order has a purpose of maintaining the bypass pump for four and a half months beyond what is necessary for the project construction at the city's request due to the high level in the sewer system. Whereas this will be change order three for this project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by twenty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars fifty cents and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Whereas the funds will be drawn from the contingency portion of this project in which there is enough to cover the increased price. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The City of Nelsonville hereby approves change order two for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project Contract as described in exhibit one, attached here to and incorporated into this ordinance as if rewritten fully within. The contract price will be increased by a sum of twenty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars thirty cents. The change includes the following. Adding two inches of curb material along Railroad Street and North Alley totaling nine thousand three hundred sixty dollars. Compensation for assisting the city in locating the leak under Canal Street on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, totaling seven thousand four hundred seventeen dollars fifty cents. Compensation for four and a half months of maintaining the bypass pump to control levels in the sewer system totaling twelve thousand six hundred dollars. Acting City Manager Devon Pollard shall have the authority to enter into, accept and/or authorize the contract change order two for Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Project Contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one. As necessary in the, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and as necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city in its own shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rule the eleventh day of September two thousand and forty-three.
Okay. Council discussion?
May I?
Go ahead.
Uh, who would have seven thousand four hundred seventeen dollars in taxes? That's good.
Uh, BB Weber.
And that's the leak of Canal Street?
Yeah, when they, when they found that they, they were actually down, they lost time, and they actually fixed, uh, the water was leaking into the manhole, and they got it sealed up. They took time to seal it up. So the water went, went into the sewer so they could continue their sewer works. So this does date back to, came back there. Uh, and they helped the city address that.
And that's when the pump started also, correct?
Uh, it was, it was throughout, uh, it was, they started a little bit before that. It was for that Fayette Street project. And, um, the truck sewer was backing up because it, I believe they struggled with, uh, being able to pump less and less flow into the, the old plant. Nelson was backing stuff up, and, uh, city asked them to maintain that bypass pump to keep stuff from backing up and blow up pipes.
Okay. Any more council discussion? Motion to suspend? So moved. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
Yes.
And Sonny? Yeah.
Motion to adopt. So moved.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Boo? And Sonny? Yes. Mr. Clement?
Yes. All right. Ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-three. I need someone to introduce, please? You will. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the transfer of one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-one cents from the unclaimed funds to the general fund in accordance to revised code one sixty-nine et cetera and local ordinance zero four dash twenty-two. Whereas the City of Nelsonville established a process for unclaimed funds in ordinance oh four twenty-two. Whereas the city has complied with that process and one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-one cents has gone unclaimed. Whereas the unclaimed money totaling one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-one cents needs to be transferred from the unclaimed fund to the general fund number one hundred. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-one cents has gone unclaimed in accordance with ordinance zero four dash twenty-two and revised code one sixty-nine et cetera. The city auditor shall have the authority to take all legal acts. The city auditor shall have the authority to take all legal acts necessary to transfer the unclaimed funds totaling one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-one cents transferred from the unclaimed funds to the general fund number one hundred. This ordinance being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to High Revised Code, seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one as a necessary emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of its citizens and its citizens shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on second reading on the eleventh day of September two thousand twenty-three.
So question, does this need to be passed by an answer? No.
No.
It's only first reading then. Yes.
You'll be right again and then discuss these.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Uh, may I? Uh, what did the one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars come from sir?
Yeah, so what, that number is the sum of funds we wrote checks out to, to individuals. Um, in fact, I think every single check was less than fifty dollars. So they were almost all small amounts in two thousand and twenty and two thousand twenty-one. And those individuals either uh, didn't cash them, forgot about them, left them on their counter pop. Um, we then posted it for twelve months. We've actually posted it for two years now and notified them of these unclaimed funds and we never received response.
The reason I ask is because I was going back to like January and there wasn't anything in that line item about unclaimed funds.
Well, this, so you guys passed legislation on the new process just last year. So as far as I know, when I look at books, there have been no unclaimed funds transferred since two thousand fourteen. Uh, so this has become, um, what, what should be a routine process is kind of restarted. And, uh, that number specifically relates to two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
So you're saying this might just sit there all this?
Yeah, because it has to sit. Um, it has to sit for at least six months when we write the check. And then the process council laid out last year, uh, requires it to sit at least twelve more months. Um, and because this was our first go around, we gave folks extra time. We also had sent out written notices and, uh, these are the folks who didn't come in for, for a new check or for new, new funds.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll do it.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-three appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following. Appropriation of past due funds in the sum of two million five hundred thousand dollars in the unappropriated balance of the water fund number seven hundred to line item seven zero zero dash seven three zero dash seven zero zero two one. Whereas the two thousand twenty-three appropriations need amended in order to appropriate two million five hundred thousand dollars of past due funds in the water fund number seven hundred to line item number seven zero zero dash seven three zero dash seven zero zero two one. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The two thousand twenty-three appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriation of past due funds in the sum of two million five hundred thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the water fund number seven hundred to line item number seven zero zero dash seven three zero dash seven zero zero two one. The total appropriated balance is decreased by said amount. Total appropriation in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor hereby authorized to update the city's certificate of resources with the county auditor and budget commission to reflect the appropriation in this ordinance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption duly enacted by council on second reading on the eleventh day of September two thousand twenty-three.
The line appropriations for this particular round of money. Is there a separate? Because when I went through again, you know, what you presented, um, I cannot find these numbers. So is it a separate thing in the water fund that you had these numbers? The line items?
This is the third or fourth, the last line item in the water fund. Uh, it's called Water Upgrade Project, uh, uh, Water, uh, Project. And, um, yeah, it's, it's there. It's, it's a line item that's been there for, for some time.
Okay, but do you put them on the, uh, the budget when you report it every year?
Yep. If you, if you go to any of the expense reports you guys are giving each month, uh, they're posted both online and in your email accounts. Um, it'll be there every single month because it's, it's been managing water projects for, uh, several years now. So some time.
So it, it's got a line of its own and you can see it. I missed it.
It's it. I promise it's there. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll do it.
Thank you. An ordinance to authorize the execution of then-announced certificates by the auditor and the payment of the amounts due will vary per disorders and declaring an emergency. Whereas pursuant to a high revised code, section five seven zero five point four one D one, the city may not enter into any contract or give any order involving an expenditure of money unless there is attached thereto a certificate of the city auditor that the amount required to meet the obligation has been lawfully appropriated for such purpose and is in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of the, of the appropriate fund free from any previous encumbrances. And whereas a high revised code, section five seven zero five point four one D one further provides that in such circumstances, when no certificate is furnished as required and the expenditure is for three thousand dollars or more, the city's council, as the city's taxing authority, may authorize the drawing of a warrant in payment of amount due upon such contract or order upon certification by the auditor that there was at the time of the execution of such certificate a sufficient sum appropriated for the purpose of such contract in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of an appropriate fund free from any previous encumbrances. And whereas such a certificate of the auditor is known as a then-announced certificate, meaning that the funds were available when the contract was made and when the amount due under the contract was or is paid. And whereas the city is issuing then-announced certificates in connection with payments due and owing as shown on exhibits A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J attached. And whereas the city council deems to be in the best, it seems, whereas the city council deems it to be in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the city to authorize the execution by the auditor of then-announced certificates and to authorize the payment of amount due under the contract or order requiring the expenditure of three thousand dollars or more. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows, that the Council of the City of Nelsonville pursuant to section five seven zero five point four one D one of the Ohio Revised Code hereby approves the execution of then-announced certificates by the auditor and authorize payments due and owing in accordance with the schedule attached as exhibits A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J incorporated herein. That it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the eleventh day of September two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. Any council discussion on said matter?
For the uninitiated, could you explain what then-announced certificates?
Yeah. Um, soon as it gets break too. Yeah, that's right. Um, for anyone who might not have been at the last meeting or the last two finance meetings, it, this is, um, the definition of routine. So this is part of our purchasing process. The state auditors, specifically the team auditing Nelsonville, gave the city of Logan, no offense to them, uh, no offense to their team, a very serious write-up about then-announced, which is essentially, um, doing things where, uh, uh, let's say you have a generator breakdown on Friday evening, but you don't have time to get approval from the auditor and the city manager. Uh, so you get your generator fixed and then you put your paperwork in on Monday. So the process has been a little bit flipped there. You had to get it before you had approval. It's pretty routine, um, especially in that kind of circumstance. Um, but the key part was Logan was not asking the city council for approval on then-announced over three thousand dollars, uh, which is what the list is in this ordinance is. Uh, so when they looked at our then-announced, we did not get, um, a write-up, but they recommended we start working on them. And, uh, we began in earnest last month. Say that you mean the state auditors. That's right. Yeah. Yeah. And Logan has too. The city councils have become very aware of then-announced in the last two months since their audit concluded too. So I'm sure they're very aware of it. Yes. Compliance is the key word.
Yes, compliance. Thank you. Any more council discussion? All right. Motion to suspend? So move. Second.
Uh, Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So move.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? Mr. Sonnen? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Okay. Uh, moving on to ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-three. I need someone to introduce it, please. Someone to introduce. Thank you.
Second. An ordinance establishing a policy for elected and appointed officials at the City of Nelsonville titled City of Nelsonville Ethics, Conflicts of Interest, Code of Conduct, and Transparency Policies and Declaring Emergency. Whereas the City of Nelsonville is to establish policies for elected and appointed officials. Whereas the city desires to enact policies titled City of Nelsonville Ethics, Conflicts of Interest, Code of Conduct, and Transparency Policies attached and included as if fully rewritten within as of today. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. This ordinance hereby establishes guidelines and policies for all City of Nelsonville elected and appointed officials to follow, attached and incorporated by reference as if fully rewritten herein as of today. This policy shall be read in conjunction with the already existing rules of Nelsonville City Council. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of its citizens. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading on the eleventh day of September two thousand twenty-three.
Any council discussion on said matter?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to thank, um, Mr. Charles for your hard work in putting this together.
Any other council discussion? Motion to suspend? So move. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yeah.
Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. No. Motion to adopt? So move. Second.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Okay. All right. Moving on to resolution. Getting Susan a little personal time here. All right, here we go. Resolution twenty-two eighty-three. Mr. May I introduce him? I will.
New resolution recognizing Fred Holmes for his service and dedication to the American Red Cross. Whereas City of Nelsonville would like to recognize Fred Holmes for his service and dedication to the American Red Cross. Whereas Fred Holmes has been a longtime resident in Nelsonville, Ohio. Whereas Fred began volunteering with the American Red Cross in two thousand five. Whereas Fred's first deployment in two thousand five was to help victims of Hurricane Katrina. Whereas Fred has been deployed thirty-four times for the American Red Cross and his travels have, have taken him to Texas, Alabama, New Jersey, Oklahoma, Florida, and many other states. His most recent deployment took him to the U.S. Territory Law. Whereas Fred's deployments have been to help provide aid, care, and services for victims in families in need post catastrophic events. Fred has been deployed for hurricanes such as Sandy, Harvey, the previously mentioned Katrina. Fred has also been deployed for other catastrophic events such as the Dixie Community Fire and the Paradise Fire to provide his aid, catering services to those affected and in need. Whereas Fred additionally participates in local fire calls, American Cross Smoke Detector Program, and helps recruit Red Cross volunteers and serves as a mass care coordinator for ten counties in southeastern Ohio. Whereas Fred's selflessness, character, kindness, energy, and graciousness towards helping individuals in need deserves the sincerest recognition and praise. Be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. The City of Nelsonville hereby recognizes and celebrates Fred Holmes' achievements, services, dedication, and service to the American Red Cross and helping those in need over the past two decades. City of Nelsonville expresses its sincerest appreciation and gratitude for Fred Holmes for his volunteer contribution, selflessness, dedication, and services which has him well in all the years to come. The city looks forward to his continued services and dedication and helping those in need. Fred's involvement with the American Red Cross and helping the citizens of Nelsonville, southeastern Ohio, and all of the United States is truly wonderful and praiseworthy. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. duly enacted by council on first reading the eleventh day of September two thousand twenty-three.
Any council discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say Fred, thank you very much.
Motion to adopt? So move.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen? One.
That's all the ordinances. Okay. City managers report.
So I want to cover one thing real quick first. Um, a couple of meetings ago, there was a committee meeting and Chief Barber requested we up his part-time staff from thirteen to twenty. And no legislation's come across about that yet. So we find a move forward with that at the next meeting or?
I thought, did you guys say that it was okay then?
I think the committee said it was okay.
Because we just need to get the information to Bob.
Seems like there's a miscommunication somewhere. So I want to make sure it's fine before and there was something else that happened.
Okay.
Mr. Betts has some updates for us on the sewer plant that he's more apt to speak about than I am.
Well, sure. Thank you. Um, I wanted to update everybody on the sewer plants. Uh, week ago, two weeks ago tomorrow, we started sending sewage, all sewage to the new plant. And that was the last day I think sewage went to the open. And, uh, things have been going really well. We expected, you know, a long, uh, bugs to be worked through when starting a facility like that. And it's going really, really well. And Sean's doing a pretty good job down there. It's a lot for those guys, you know, new plant to run and they've got a lot of things that they're doing, they're learning. And they're also moving stuff from the old plant to take down there because we've met and we're hoping that we can start demolition of the old facility in early October. We have to achieve some things here to make that happen, like removing the power supply of the buildings. We need AEP cooperation. There's going to be gas service, stuff like that. So the guys are working through that right now. We discussed at one time a ribbon cutting ceremony. And I think we should do that mid to late October. I figured the trees would be nice, you know, at that time. And hopefully we've got the seed. The seed's not quite germinated the way I'd like it to be. And we've worked through more punch list stuff and getting some touches on that. So I think mid-October would be a good target hit for a ribbon cutting ceremony so I can work with Devin and Jason and facilitating that, picking a day and time and what all I want to do with that. Well, there's a couple of things I want to make sure to note. Oh, yes. At the old plant, there's question. So the contract requires removing all the buildings, including the old office building there, and the fencing. And so a question came about, in fact, there was discussion at one point with the dog park about salvaging the old office building and turning it into a restroom. That, that discussion's, you know, hasn't happened for over nine months. And so I need direction from the city as to whether we want to salvage that building and keep it or just let it be demolished with the rest of the buildings there.
I think that's going to be a great idea. I don't know about everybody else. We could bring it to Parks and Rec Committee and you can discuss that account long before you get to know.
Well.
Tomorrow.
No, a couple of weeks would do. I know you've talked about the twenty-eighth. We're talking about the following week. So I mean, that'd be pushing it close, but it works from the worst looking time. Maybe, you know, take a look at it beforehand, see if prepared, get an answer on that. The only consideration I would point out for that building, the power is fed through just one of the centralized buildings there, the pump station, and it branches out to all the different buildings and structures within there. So I'd suggest to get a real cost on what it would take to get a power service just for that building and whatever wiring would need to be done for that. Get a local electrician to provide that. I'd estimate.
What's your opinion on it? Is it worth saving or should we rent some bathroom that we wanted to buy?
Well, it's got one restroom right now.
Yeah.
It's kind of elevated, which is nice for the, I don't know if it's ADA. And that'd be the other cautions I'd point out, you know, that I think it would take some investment to bring it into use or function of a public restroom.
So that's how we could figure that and get it together on.
Yeah. Yeah. And then the fencing. The fencing is in decent shape in portions or especially along the river. Could be potentially reused for the dog park or just get rid of it and start fresh. So again, that's not a call I want to make. It'd be for the city to decide. So but like I said, if we get those decisions in the next couple of weeks, we can.
Okay.
Devin, did you, did I cover everything?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. President, I have a question. Will we receive a final report, especially with that big dollar amount on what the total project costs?
I can provide that absolutely. So I should expand just a little. So we, we allowed the contract, the contract includes sixty days for final completion after the substantial completion. Contractor requested substantial completion last night. So for the contract, that gives them sixty days to get things finished. Now the AEP stuff, you know, if we can't move that along, they're just notorious to get things moving with. So I throw caution to the wind there a little bit with demolition, but we should be getting everything wrapped up now. I can provide the final price. We're still well over a million dollars in the one point five contingency that was, was in there. So we've, we've done pretty well overall. There are some minor changeovers coming as we wrap things up and get through punch lists, just some odds and ends, clean up stuff. I'll present at the appropriate time. And then we have to do the operation and maintenance manual D L Z. And so that's why you'll see on your projections, like sewer plant in the twenty-four a little bit. And that's for our work to assemble all that stuff. So there's, there's still some stuff to keep up. But I'll get you a financial summary.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have for right now. Okay. All right. To the order. Mr. Coleman?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I'd like to see the planning commission get back up and working on some projects. But right now it appears they are down two members. So if we could put the word out for that.
I'll have Dan issue or unless it's.
Okay. And I don't know where we stand with the other boards. Information is about to be a good time to update all of the city planning information.
Okay.
And the other thing, at our next meeting, could we have a code of force of an update?
Sure. Getting. Yeah.
We all have.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
What about the, that meeting board?
All right, man. I could give a report. I can give one.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Childs.
Mr. President, the only thing I'd like to bring up is if anyone's interested in what the Ohio Sunshine laws actually say, you can go to the Ohio Attorney General's website and get a free publication sent to you and it covers both the Ohio Public Records Act and the Open Meeting Act. Free of charge. It took less than seven days for me to get this in the mail when I asked for it. And, you know, it answers a lot of questions. You know, there's an old saying that my dad taught me about. Be careful about believing everything you hear right away because lies travel faster than the truth. An example that, you know, I'd like to bring up is there was a question about the president of council being able to bring in non-members of council to the executive session. The executive session is outlined in chapter nine of this publication. And to answer the question that was floating around the room that night, it says here that the public body can invite non-members to be present in an executive session but cannot exclude other members of the public body from the executive session. So I just ask everybody, before you start believing the rumors and misinformation that's being transmitted out there, to just take a step back and do some research and find out what the facts are.
I would just like to thank the Prairie of the Hills Committee for their hard work. Another successful Prairie of the Hills. I was a part of that years ago and that is, that is not an easy job. I'll just catch his criticisms and complaints and everything else. So also, you know, I was sitting at home last night and my kids kind of got scared. They didn't want to go to school today. It was on, so in their little world, it got around that nine eleven was today. And they, they were scared. They didn't want to go. They had a bad premonition that something bad was going to happen. So in their little group of kids that talk, that is what they had come up with. And it was, it was kind of, you know, they're eleven years old and they're scared. So. The fact, Mr. Sherman?
I'd like to thank Nelsonville Fire Department for putting on a very good ceremony today honoring nine eleven. Can you just follow that?
Mr. Booth, I'd like to add that and thank all of our first responders or police, fire, or military. Being today is the anniversary of nine eleven. This is something none of us will ever forget. One of the things I think to do forget, and I'm including myself in that, is how we felt on nine twelve. What did we do on nine twelve? We all came together. People like Fred Holmes go out there and selflessly take care of other people. Sometimes we put ourselves ahead of the group, the city or the community. We need to get back to that. And I'll go first.
Could I add just a personal comment about that, about my friends and I were in Mexico when nine eleven occurred. And one of the women, women was watching TV and she comes running into our room and she's like, God, they're bombing the towers. And after it was all over, we walked down in the streets of Mazzabon and the people came up and hugged us and said how sorry you were. And, you know, that was just an amazing experience for somebody else that really cared what happened to us. And I will never forget that either.
We all have that ability. And sometimes we put up our walls, we put up our barriers and, you know, as Mr. Childs talked about, sometimes we believe things without finding out the real story. We're all in this thing together, guys. Let's work together. That's all I've got.
Mr. Holmes, my personal congratulations, sir, for all that you have done and in the future that you will do. An honor to know you, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. Need to go, motion to go into executive session real quick for O R C one twenty-one dash twenty-two G for legal and personnel matters. So move. I'll be inviting him. I'm inviting him, Mr. Toy and Mr. Coliver. Eight o'clock. Is there a second? Yes.
Mr. Crumpet?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Motion to come out of executive session at eight thirteen. So move. Second.
Mr. Coleman? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Would you move it back? I remember you moved it up. Eight thirteen. So move.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.